Let's call the meeting to order, please, and rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation and for God in the name of liberty and justice for all. Good morning.
Good morning.
We will hop right into our agenda. First off, we need to approve the council minutes from the January 3rd meetings.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, this morning, we are going to hear from Matthew Richmond about the equitable sharing agreement.
Morning.
Hi.
This is my annual trip over here to get approval, request approval for the equitable sharing agreement that we have with the federal government. This is something we've been doing for 20 years. Whenever there is a seizure of cash typically on the interstate or some other major drug seizure with the federal government, our office participates in that and this program allows us to get a certain percentage of that money back that we then use for training and equipment in our office. In some years, we don't have any seizures, other years, we may have a couple, but each year, I have to come over here and request approval from council and get a signature on this program so we continue to participate in it. So I just request a signature from, and it says in here, the county council chairperson, but it should be from President Leisure on this. I've requested a signature today. Thank you.
Do you have any questions? If not, I'll enter another meeting to allow me to sign the agreement.
So moved.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Would you like that now or later?
Sure, you can give it to us and we can see that you get it back if we can.
Okay.
Or we can sign it one day.
You can just take it and review it and it's back here on the final page.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Alright, thank you so much. Have a good day.
Alright, next, our interlocal agreement for emergency communications department. Anyone want to speak to this? The interlocal agreement for, this is the one between us and the city of Richmond?
Aye.
I thought that's why Matthew was making.
Hey, Matthew.
I have some comments.
If anybody's sure, I guess it's me.
Wait a minute, what were we talking about here?
This is an annual agreement the city has for, since we started the joint PSAP, the city has participated in funding this. We have, we continue to work with them through the executive committee to pull together the information, Matthew pulls together the information.
Tammy.
That they knew, okay.
Pass it on down the line.
Somebody down the line pulls the information together on how much we spend. We had been, until last year, estimating the worst-case scenario to give them for their budgeting. Turns out that they prefer the most likely scenario, and so the process has changed a little bit, and the numbers are changing a little bit, but we've, the commissioners have agreed to this, and you're next on the list. And Matthew, if you want to add anything to that.
No, not a whole lot to add. There's no change in the verbiage from last year's interlocal agreement. It still covers the same employees, and the city of Richmond is billed for the actual cost or the actual expenses for those salaries for that month. It's a month-to-month bill that the city receives, just so you're reminded of that.
I have a little comment that, and I think you probably heard me say this last year, that Wayne County benefits from the willingness of the city of Richmond to enter into this interlocal agreement and to financially support the operation of the consolidated PSAP. That's not a common thing across the state. There's nothing in statute that requires a municipality to financially support the operation of PSAP. And in Wayne County, with Richmond City Police and City Fire being the largest customers and work effort for the staff there, Richmond has always willingly stepped up and financially contributed to your budget, and you definitely appreciate their willingness to.
I think this is somewhat a product of how we went about putting this in place many, many years ago, between the city and the county and implementation of that. The process, which brought in the other towns and fire departments and so forth, but it was not an effort strictly of Wayne County to put this in place. I'm glad that still happened.
Late 90s, I believe, if I'm not mistaken. Late 90s.
She knows exactly the date.
Mother's Day, 1990s.
Oh, there you go.
I knew it was earlier than late 90s, yes.
And then we have a tremendous staff down there, you know, they've gone through some tragic events in the last 12 months, and Matthew and Aaron have a tremendous workforce, a steady workforce. They're again not common across the state, and we appreciate the work you do and your team does.
Thank you. Does anybody have any other questions? Otherwise, I would just need a motion to allow me to sign this agreement with the city.
So moved.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none, motion passes. We will sign that and give that back to the proper people. Okay, next, in January, we were, we were told by DLGF that we needed to deappropriate 1.442 million dollars from our budget, and we took that action, but actually, there was one wrong word in the resolution, so we need to do that again. So right now, I'm going to open a public hearing and take any comments or questions over this action. And if there are none, I'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none. So now we just need to vote to accept resolution 2024-01 that is directing the adjustment of the advertised 2024 budget in the amount of 1.15 million.
So moved.
Second. Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none. We just, did you give me three copies of that?
I'll find it.
Yeah, there's three copies to be signed. You guys all go ahead and sign those, and then we will, I'll get those in a minute. Okay, next up, we have Ritter Strategic Service Contract. We are fortunate to have Barry on our council, and he cares about this county and cares about what happens here, and I'm pleased to have him explain the next phase of the service contract that we have coming up.
I think that, thanks Beth, I appreciate those comments. I became the public safety consultant for Wayne County back in 2021 before I was a council member. I just so happened to be elected after I started doing some work for the county, and we've addressed that through legal counsel, my ability to continue serving. We just delivered the first phase of this emergency communication system report to commissioners a few weeks ago that my team identified the deficiencies in the radio systems and made recommendations for the county to consider moving forward to improve radio communications, issues that we've suffered with for a number of years. Commissioners accepted those recommendations, and my understanding has approved us moving forward with the actual work. I will note for those watching by TV and the general public that the headline in the Western Wayne News that says that the county's going to spend $260,000 to study the options is not an accurate statement. We've studied the options, we've presented the options to the county, and then this next phase of work is the actual work, working with the contractors, specifications, installation of equipment, testing of the equipment, and deployment of equipment, that at the end of this next phase would improve public safety communications. And so, interestingly, as we begin to put this together, Matthew and my team have had some wonderful kickoff discussions with the state. We think we've identified cost savings in the overall project, not only this particular scope of work that's before you, but in the deployment of equipment and equipping first responders with mobiles and portables. I think we're going to be able to rely upon the state's QPA, Qualified Purchasing Agreements, that will save the county money in achieving that level of communications. The scope that's before you, worst-case scenario, in phase one, we did come in under budget, and I would anticipate that in this next phase, we'll come in under budget as well, which means that we'll have the opportunity to redirect these monies to other projects that commissioners and council deem appropriate. We're prepared to move forward. I would be more than happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from anyone?
Question for the commissioners. Considering the size of this agreement, was any thought put into bidding?
We have discussed in the past whether we would bid some of these projects. It is a service contract, so it's not statutorily required. My feeling is, we're very fortunate to have Ritter Strategic Services here. They've been our go-to folks for a few years now. Barry is recognized across the state as an expert in this area. You know, he headed our 911 department for several years. He headed the state's 911 programming for several years before he went out on his own as a private contractor. Again, after consulting with Ron, there's no need to put this out for bid. After consulting with Matthew, there certainly are other contractors, but across the state, there have been some problems with other contractors that have ended in lawsuits, is my understanding. I think we made a sound decision. This is a follow-on to the original 81,000-ish original contract to look at options. So again, for all those reasons, I think we did not feel it was necessary to take it out to bid, and we believe that with this new information and the direction that we're moving now, we'll be able to come in under the 1.5 million or very close to that, that we have allocated through the help program. It's ARPA dollars. That doesn't mean that we need to change our process. This is our process, and we did consult with the attorney and felt like this was the appropriate step to take.
I have all the confidence in Barry, just the size of the payment and with him being on a, on council, I think probably the appropriate thing would have been to bid in this situation. I realize we're not required to do that legally, but for Barry and for everyone, I think it just avoids the, you know, any appearance of impropriety.
I understand your position.
I think we need to reiterate and be very clear that Barry's work does not include selling us any equipment.
Correct.
Selling equipment, things like that. It's all the technical support, developing the specifications for what we need and so forth. It's not a large ticket item that's going to eventually come out of this, towers, handball radios, and all of that.
Correct.
And also, he has recused himself from any voting on any of this, and.
Ron, what is your opinion?
The contract was entered into in 2021, which predates Barry's term of membership. So, I mean, that's.
Yeah. Alright, so do we need to approve that contract? Do you have that?
Do I have the contract?
Do we need to approve it?
I don't believe so. I think this is one of those situations where the money is already appropriated, but we have tried our very best to keep you all informed of decisions that are being made in how we're spending ARPA dollars, and this is one of those steps. I'll give a report on some of the other things here in a little bit.
Okay, I appreciate all the, all the explanations. Okay, next, we've had a couple people lately, you know, there's a lot of broadband expansion going on in our county, and we have had two different, we've had people asking for our support, and we have dealt with, with charter and different ones on some of the expansions they've made, and now there's more money available, and we will be, we would like to enter into a letter of support from council. Commissioners already sent their letter.
Correct.
And you have received this letter in your email, and I would just like for us to just vote to sign this letter of support for broadband expansion in Wayne County.
Move for approval.
And I think we need to point out, this is not obligated asking for money.
No.
It's just in support of the efforts.
They're seeking grants, and they would like our support. So of course, we support them to get a grant for this, not ask for money. We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none, motion passes. I will pass that for everyone to sign. Next, we have a letter that, another support letter for the Ready 2.0 initiative. Do you want to talk about that?
Yeah, if I could. So Ready 2.0 is another, another state program that will provide funding for regions within the state for economic development purposes. It's being spearheaded by the Indiana Economic Development Corporation. They are putting in another $500 million as they did with Ready 1.0. The same eight counties that we're a part of that applied for Ready 1.0 are working together to put together an application for Ready 2.0. If you haven't heard, the Lilly Foundation has added another $250 million that will be a part of Ready 2.0. It will be focused a little bit differently than the money from the IEDC and from the state, but we will have another opportunity to apply for additional funding then through the IEDC that will involve blight remediation and quality of place kinds of projects. This request comes to us from our eight-county region to put together a letter, and the basic letter there is the form that they recommended. In the second paragraph, I put together a couple of sentences of language that are really related just to Wayne County. And so, what we're, what we're hoping, and the commissioners have not seen this, this just came to me late Friday and been working on it since then. So you're seeing this for the first time, I apologize for that, but it is due by this Friday, back to them so that they can include it in their application. So what I'm asking you, and what I will be asking the commissioners this afternoon, is that we endorse this. I think, I believe there won't be any opposition to this. I hope there won't be. I think what you have in front of you should be two different letters, one that if, you just have the one. We've got another one. We drafted actually three letters, one with signature lines just for the commissioners, one with signature lines just for council, and one with 10 signature lines for everybody. I think that would be a powerful message if all 10 of us as a team support this, this application. I will tell you that the application this year is on general themes rather than specific projects, although there's been an opportunity for a lot of folks to, to suggest projects. And the IEDC then will be working with our eight-county region if we're selected, if we go farther forward in the process, to identify projects. So the IEDC will be selecting projects. Right now, they're looking at general themes of what is your plan, what kind of focus do you have? Is it, is it downtown redevelopment? Is it housing? Is it a combination of things? Is it amenities and so on? I have not seen the final application. I don't know that anybody outside of the committee has, has seen that. It is like Ready 1. It's being spearheaded by the economic development corporations from each of the eight counties in our region. So this is a general letter of support that I would ask you to approve, and I'll ask, I'll ask the commissioners this afternoon when we meet.
And actually, I did send this letter to council yesterday because like you said, I could, after you and I talked about doing this jointly. And so you did have this in your email, so it's not something that they, that we've never seen. So if everybody got a chance to work on it, so.
Unfortunately, the commissioners haven't seen it yet. I was in Indianapolis all day yesterday and get a chance to get it out to them.
Do you have a rough, high-level timeline of this process?
Generally speaking, in the next couple of weeks, the application is due. There's supposed to be site visits and communications with IEDC, and there has been some of those already. A decision, as I understand it, sometime this summer. You know, we still are working on expending the money that came to us from Ready 1.0, so there's a little bit of overlap here, but I don't have the, all the dates in my head because it's something that the EDC really has been directing. I don't, again, this doesn't commit us to anything. Although, you need to know that, that when the projects are selected, the state dollars are supposed to be a maximum of 20% of the total investment. There can be local investment, local government tax dollar, public investment of another 20%, and then the idea is 60% of the investment will be private. The, as I understand it, again, the private investment and the local public investment are kind of fungible. So if it's, if it ends up being 70/10, or it ends up being, you know, some other percentage, as long as the 20% from the state is all that's a part of the final mix, there's some latitude. At least there was in Ready 1.0, and I'm told there would be for Ready 2.0. But there is definitely a need to have discussion once the projects are identified of, is there local public investment, and if so, where does that come from? And at this point, that's not been a real topic of discussion until the projects are identified.
Jeff and I were both on a scoring committee, and, and it does look like there are some tangible housing projects possibly that would come out of that, and you know, housing's been a big need for a long time, so.
But again.
You never know, they may not just select it.
Those were, as I understand it, of the 10, top 10 scores in that scoring process on projects, two of those were Wayne County projects. But even though they're, they're in the application, they will refer to those projects, it is completely possible that the IEDC will come in and say, you know, that those aren't the projects we want to fund. We want to fund this and that and the other thing. So IEDC has been doing projects across the state that have, some have had very little local input, others have had complete local input. So I don't know how this is going to shake out, but I think it's certainly an opportunity. As you know, there's been tens of millions of dollars that have been committed to Richmond and Wayne County from various sources over the last year or two, including the help commitments that we've made. And so, this is another opportunity that I think we want to try to take advantage of.
Any more questions? If not, I'm happy that we're doing this jointly with the commissioners, and I think it just shows the solidarity that we have here in our county and how we work together. I'll take a motion for us to sign this letter of support.
You want to sign a letter of support from council, and then the joint letter in case the commissioners don't go along with this today?
That's why I had Bobby to prepare multiple letters.
We have high hopes that the commissioners will be on board with this.
Either way, you want to sign it, then.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none. Of course, we want to work together with you. Okay, now, the commissioners have given us a list of their recommendations for some of the ARPA expenditures, and we've all had a chance to look over this list, and we are going to take these items one by one. In the top section, we have three sections here. These are their recommendations at the top. The second one is the still available money. Those are just some placeholders. And the third one are some projects that could, would normally have been spent out of county general, but we can use our ARPA dollars for these things.
If I could make just a comment to that.
Sure.
Because again, this is something that I just recently put together after talking to some of you. I had some requests to put together a list of items, and remember that commitment of ARPA dollars has a timeline. It has to be committed contractually by the end of 2024. So after being asked, I put together this list. It is nothing more than possibilities of current projects that are underway that will, I think, I'm pretty confident they'll be completed in 2024, that if we need to, we could spend ARPA dollars on these and then save the money that was previously committed, whether it's in your projects, line item, or in some other budget. And then those dollars would not have a timeline associated with them. So we could work together to, to spend those dollars at a later date, that if we don't meet the ARPA guidelines, that money goes back to the US Treasury. So I don't want that to happen. I know you all don't want that to happen. But, you know, I think if we end up doing this and spending some money of ARPA dollars on, for example, the courthouse exterior, there's still $300,000 that we haven't yet paid on that project with the stone work. So we could do that, and that would free up the money that's already budgeted and appropriated for that to be used on projects at a later date, even if it were next year or the year after that. So that's the genesis of that third area, just to bring it up so you are all aware. And, and what we really need you to look at is the recommendation that the commissioners have approved. The only change to that section is the journey home transitional. The only change to that section is the Journey Home, uh, transitional housing project that had been up in that first list. Uh, I have since talked to the director of the Journey Home. Uh, they had applied for funding from the federal government, uh, to be able to expand into Wayne County. They did not receive that grant. Uh, they still want to talk to us about some, some programming that, uh, that they might be able to provide in Wayne County, but it would not be transitional housing. And so I moved that from the recommended line item down to the, the second category there so that we can, we can entertain that when we get additional information in the next couple of weeks.
And keep in mind, you remember last year, the whole painstaking process of having all the public meetings and, and, uh, input sessions where people, um, actually, the public told us what they would like to see and what they would like to have. So not everything is just going to be, uh, you know, repairing our buildings and things like that. These, these dollars are for all kinds of projects that came out of all those meetings. Okay.
Before we go, I'd like to address a little bit, because Jeff, um, I was one that thought we needed to look at what monies we were going to spend in the next three years. Consider doing that, so it takes some of it off the timeline, but, but also, um, if we were going to spend monies otherwise, and we can use ARPA dollars if there are projects that are not ARPA-related, we have the ability to do that. And one of those was longevity pay, which we've talked about for a long time, and, um, this is an opportunity for us to put some dollars away down here at the bottom. Uh, and I know this is, I don't think you've talked to all the department heads if there's anything else, or...
We have, actually. In fact, you know, we, we instituted department head and elected official meetings, uh, department heads we meet with monthly, elected officials we're, we're meeting with quarterly. We've had two of those sessions now, uh, we started last fall, and that was one of the questions we asked at those meetings is, has anything changed? Do you need, you know, any, do you have anything that ARPA dollars could support? Some of those you see right here, uh, and, and others, there was one that, uh, uh, the clerk had requested a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for voting equipment. That came off the list because that's now been funded by the state and a, a grant, uh, through the Secretary of State's office, so, uh, so we have absolutely reached out to all elected officials and department heads and asked them that question, what do you see coming and, and, you know, do you want to, uh, request ARPA funding for that?
Right, well, I, I think, in my opinion, that's the most important section, um, of it. Um, you know, we've already, also the fuel tanks that have to be replaced, that is something that we, uh, a half million dollars, uh, that has already been approved.
Correct.
It's on the list anymore.
And that'll be on our, our, on our project report here in a little bit.
But I, I think, I think those type projects, if we want to look at some other things that are non-ARPA, that is, uh, in- important for us, uh, to consider. Um, you know, some of these, we've had a great deal of information about, others, not so much, but the commissioners, uh, have, um, you know, I'm, I'm not comfortable voting on all of these, and, and those that I'm not comfortable, uh, voting on, I'm going to vote no. Um, but, um, you know, if there's a broad consensus, um, you know, I, I think that's a look at. So, um, you know, like I said, the, the projects down at the bottom, I think, are the ones that, uh, totally make sense, it gives us flexibility, um, whether we later fund a, a project that qualifies for ARPA, whether we, uh, are able to use those funds, you know, in a manner that we wanted to for a long time, so.
I could make two quick comments to, to some of yours. Number one, uh, I think we have discussed, uh, many, many, many times, uh, that the majority want to focus the attention of these dollars on one-time expenditures, uh, and so we've, we've tried to do that here. Uh, the other would be, uh, some of these, you, you're saying additional information, I agree with you, but you see the, the last, uh, item in that, in that upper list is for engineering and contractual expenses. So we can't give you a lot more information unless we're able to hire somebody to, an architect or an engineer, or somebody that can, can, uh, do the, the plans, work with us on plans and, and getting estimates. So that's what, that line item is, uh, is intended to do, to be able to give you additional information on some of these. Thanks.
Are we ready?
Question.
Okay.
Please. The, um, Jeff, in the, the top list here and the recommendation, if there's one of those particular items that, uh, council does not support in funding, what's your plan for those dollars?
Uh, like anything else, if, if we don't spend money on this, we need to move it, it still has a deadline of December thirty-first of this year to be committed. So we'll, we'll present another idea, we'll, uh, bring up something from the next category or the bottom category and we'll say...
Or get more information.
Or get more information if that's, if that's why you reject it.
This isn't a, a drop dead, boo.
Absolutely, and I, and I understand that, and we're, we're trying to provide as much as we can. What we're trying to do is push this forward. You know, time is, is running out, we need to, we need to push these things forward, and at least know if, if you have an objection to a particular project, what's the objection? Is it something that we can, we can work through with more information, as you just said? Or is it something that you just philosophically disagree with and, and we should scratch it off of our list? So that way we'll know where we're at. As Barry alluded to, uh, a moment ago, there are also going to be projects that, we have a number here, five hundred thousand dollars, but it ends up costing four hundred thousand dollars. So that hundred thousand dollars is going to have to be reallocated, identified, you know, before the end of the year. So we very well may need to spend more than the twelve point seven eight million in ARPA that's allocated, and we can do that by, uh, moving money from, uh, let's say it's currently allocated to the general fund, now we're spending out of ARPA, now we've got more money from ARPA that's committed. So we can make those adjustments, we need to make those adjustments as we go along, but we also need to get moving. So we appreciate you looking at this today.
That's the major point for today, we've got to get some things started, and, and the engineering and things like that on some of the other projects. So first up, uh, the hardscape, landscape, five hundred thousand, I mean, I would, I would approve that as an up to five hundred, because we don't know what that's going to be yet. And does anybody have any questions? I know we've, it is not, this is not just plants and trees, this is changing the, uh, entrance to the courthouse to make it handicap accessible, things like that. So right now, we're not sure exactly what that's going to cost. We have a motion to approve that one.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, the new cabling for data and voice, that's a necessary evil of the times, it's been a long time since those things were updated, and it's just an important thing to help our offices, um, function.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor? Okay, next up, the roofs at the fairgrounds on the, um, First Bank, Pullman Center, and also the horse barn. That one is three hundred thousand, up to, you know, these are all...
Yeah, I'm going to be, I'm, I'm linking motion to be in favor of that, I also want to look at the master plan for the fairgrounds, possibly moving the horse arena and the horse barn, it's a built-in force, so I think we do look at that master plan, before we spend a lot of money on the horse barn if we're spacious, it could be safe, uh, do something different. But I'll, I will make motion to approve that one.
We have a second?
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor? Next up, there's two hundred and fifty thousand for security issues and the prox park, um, locks, we've heard a lot about that in the last couple of years, it's part of the safety plan, eliminates keys floating around and... Do we have a motion on that one?
I would move that.
Second.
Okay, motion in a second, all in favor? Next up, the all-terrain, uh, bearcat vehicle for the sheriff's department. We've had presentations on this, and we've all, I think some of us have all talked to people out in the public and, and, uh, is there any other questions for the sheriff or anybody else on this one?
I have no other questions.
Okay.
Sorry, ma'am.
No, it's all right.
You said you have no other questions?
No.
Oh, what were you going to say?
I was going to make a statement about this. Um, we've had a lot of information, discussed this a lot. I fully support, uh, law enforcement, I just fail to see the need to have opportunities in, in Wayne County, and, uh, I, I just don't feel comfortable in that amount of money for this duplicated effort. So I, I will be opposing this particular item.
I have a comment as well. So I have talked to a lot of different people and different walks of life and so forth, and for me, if I look at three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I think of it this way, you could go buy a really nice house for three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but can you pay for a life, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars? I, I'm, that's kind of my scale, that's not everybody's, but that's kind of the, the way I look at it, is I would hate to think that we didn't do that, even though the city may have one, doesn't mean it's available when we need it. But we all know how much easier a job is when you have the right tools to do the job, and when you're talking about somebody's life, whether it's one of our first responders or some lady and her kids that this person has broken into the house and they, they're holding them hostage, I just, I just don't know how, you know, and that's my reasoning why we get a motion, I would vote for it, for that reason.
I, um, I've dug into this very deeply. Um, I know we had a previous grant application, um, and, and it was denied, uh, we did not apply this last year, um, and, um, you know, I think grant dollars, uh, receive grant dollars, I wouldn't, I would be all for it. Um, we've gone years and years without a bearcat, the city of Richmond is acquiring one. One be- bearcat is better than none. Um, uh, Richmond obviously would have mu- mutual aid, I know a question came up with, how do we know that Richmond would respond? Um, I had one taxpayer, uh, question why we were doing it, um, and I, I gave them that as one of the reasons. Um, he pulled out his phone, called the chief of police, and the chief of police said absolutely we would respond. Um, you know, I've had people say, it's not Wayne County taxpayer dollars. Um, well, yes it is, because the citizens of Wayne County do pay taxes to the federal government. Um, I, I've, I've had one councilperson say, it's just three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, well, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars is a big number to a lot of taxpayers. Um, and, you know, we don't prepare our budget, um, and, and when we have limited dollars and say, well, let's do it because it's just three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that's a lot of money. Um, Randolph County, I, I raised the question, uh, or question was raised to me, if Randolph County has a situation, um, and they're down here, what are they going to do? That was at a public meeting and, uh, nobody said anything, but we find out that Randolph County does have two, uh, bearcats, and that was a little disturbing that that wasn't brought up, uh, at the time, because some people in the room did know that they had two, uh, bearcats. Um, and then, you know, do we have to have the most, do we have to have a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar bearcat? You know, what, what, you know, are there other options? So, um, you know, for tho- those reasons, I will be voting no on this.
All right.
I guess, um...
Go ahead.
Everyone else's, uh, sheer comments, maybe my motion was ahead of what you were anticipating there, uh, but my motion stands, but my comments is, you know, I've, I've supported the, uh, the sheriff in his quest to purchase the bearcat, and appreciate the commissioners, um, standing behind that. Um, you know, I, my career's been in public safety, I think this is a tool, it's an opportunity for us to obtain that tool, and if that tool is utilized to protect the life of, of any citizen, it doesn't have to be a law enforcement officer, aromatic or an EMT, um, anyone in this room, um, I believe it's, it's money well spent. Uh, I've made the comment, you know, it's kind of like a fire truck, you buy it, you hope you never have to use it, but in reality, we know we will. Um, and so, um, if it's protecting, uh, the lives of, or has the potential to protect lives, uh, that's why I've been, uh, supporting with this and I'll vote for it.
And I will say, the person who said it's just three hundred and fifty thousand didn't say it's just three hundred and fifty thousand in a flippant remark. That was, the remark was, it's three hundred and fifty thousand out of thirteen million dollars we had to spend, that was the remark, and it wasn't to, um, spend money unwisely out of this, um, I will say, times have changed over the years and things are getting worse out there every day. Just the general public I deal with every day, I cannot believe how people act, and that's in a calm setting, it's not in a, in a, a situation like the sheriff's department's in all the time. And also, this vehicle is all-terrain, and I think the city's vehicle's only a street vehicle, that can make a difference when you're out in the county, so that's just a comment. But to me, I'm going to support this because I'm going to err, if it's an error, on the side of public safety.
I have one quick question. I see the sheriff sitting there, Randy, did you tell us at one time, and I may have this confused, that if we went ahead and, and purchased the bearcat, you could still apply for a grant and then pay that money back, or no?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So if we approved it, would you do that?
Yes, ma'am, and I clarify one thing only on the...
Please.
I did want to say to Mr. Gillum's point, the reason that we did not apply for that grant last year was, there was a specific report that was provided to the federal government from the emergency management agency of this county, uh, that, uh, because, uh, of certain circumstances within that report, that's one of the reasons that, that we were not approved the year before, and that, uh, that, that item, uh, in that report did not change the following year, so the outcome would have been exactly the same. Uh, so I, I didn't feel like it's in the best interest of our, our time and, and, uh, our tax dollars to, uh, to spend the resources to apply for that grant, uh, if that, that had not changed, so, uh, great outcome. But I'm, I'm more than happy to, uh, continue working with EMA, uh, to see if those adjustments can be made, and if it's al- at all possible, uh, to, uh, apply for and receive the, the funding for that, uh... funding for that, uh, absolutely.
Thank you. Any more comments?
Yeah, I haven't commented yet. I never one to have commented, but, uh, I, I, uh, did talk to a lot of people on this, uh, bearcat, uh, I have to talk to Randy about this would be an all-terrain vehicle, rather than a street type vehicle, uh, the taxpayers out there feel like it, with the basis of society, that it would be a great benefit to our county to have it. Uh, it's Randy replied for a grant, but this money here from the federal government is nothing but a grant itself, I mean, they throw, throw this money out there, buddy, and it's our tax dollars that they're doing, or our great-grandkids' tax dollars paying for this, so, but anyway, I, I feel like the comments I've had from the taxpayers that I've talked to, that I will have support for, so I'll have a second, where is motion?
All right, we have a motion and a second, and I think I'll just take a roll call vote 'cause I know there's some yays and nays, so, um, Council members, uh, yea. Mr. Saunders?
Yea.
Matt Smith?
Nay.
Gary?
Yea.
No.
And my vote is yea, so the motion passes. Next up, we have the Creating Places funding for the non-help towns. You said, I think that's a, the explanation's good enough, because there it says the non-help towns, they did not participate in the help project with anyone else in the county, so do we have any questions or comments?
I have to comment, I have some support in this because both people had the opportunity to be involved in this, the money they was committed to this project was gonna stay in their own community anyway, so it wasn't gonna lose, it wasn't gonna give that money to the county, everybody else was gonna pay their own, so I have a problem, uh, of supporting this one.
Any other comments?
If I could make one, we labor this point, but, uh, just for your information, the Creating Places program is one that communities do not put money into, they raise funds, uh, this would allow the county to contribute to projects from non-help communities, and they would need to raise, uh, money to match what would come from the state. It's, uh, an opportunity, in my opinion, uh, to work more closely with some of those communities that, uh, were not able to, chose not to participate in help, and that's why the commissioners have submitted, and we're, we're happy to hear your feelings on it.
So, um, I know negative motions are kind of crazy, I don't know what most of somebody's gonna make on this one.
If you, if you don't make a motion, you're gonna tell the story anyway, so...
Is there a motion? There is no motion, so that one dies. Next up, the solar speed signs for towns, I know some towns already have, have their I'm, I'm, I'm not, I don't mind some, some towns getting this, but in all fairness, I'm not giving the other, I don't give the other towns the money back for the ones they already lost, 'cause they already had the money to buy them in the first place, but do we have a motion, or do we not have a motion on the solar speed sign?
No, I think when we first, we first talked about that, I was opposed. And, you know, there are, there are communities that have these speed limit signs that they acquired them out of their, you know, their own monies or however, but they have them, um, and that, while I, I'm supportive of the concept, I don't always obey the speed limits, you know? You know, you know, there's a big push by, from NHTSA at the federal level and highway traffic safety, and a lot of public safety dollars that we're gonna see in the future is gonna flow through NHTSA for highway traffic safety. Um, so, lack of supporting this is not a lack of encouraging those communities to take the initiative to do something on their own to protect their citizens, um, and they have the option of doing that.
So, is there a motion? Looks like we have no motion on that, so that one dies also. And next up, we have the engineering and contractual fees, and we, that's almost necessary for the other things we've already approved, if we don't do this, they can't get started on things, so...
Like a motion, we commit up to a thousand dollars, we need to turn engineering and contractual fees.
Do we have a second?
Yes.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? There are none, motion passes. Now, is there any, is there anything that, um, we wanna recommend back to the commissioners for approval? Like the list at the bottom, or any other projects?
I would recommend that, uh, the highway department has, uh, projects that they feel like are gonna have to come up in the next few years, uh, one point two eight six billion dollars of that five hundred thousand has already been committed, so that would leave seven, seven hundred eighty six billion, or seven hundred eighty six thousand dollars left, and I think we need to look at those projects, all those projects, what we got this money to do it with, so we're gonna have to take it out of general fund.
You can see at the, the very last line item here is five hundred thousand for highway projects, which potentially could include, uh, additional parking at the fairgrounds that, um, that they could do. The other thing I would direct your attention to, that, like, called me yesterday when I was at the state house and said, our, our next dump truck came in, or is gonna be delivered today.
That's right.
So that's a hundred and fifty thousand, uh, that in the last dump truck, uh, in December or November was paid out of the ARPA, and, uh, so this is another item that we actually, this is the only one that has urgency that we need to decide today, uh, and the commissioners, again, is so new, that the commissioners have a position on this, but if you will, if you're patient, we could take it to the commissioners this afternoon to identify how we're gonna pay for that.
And, and as I understand, th- this is the last dump truck, and...
It's on order.
But, I mean, there's not even any down the road until maybe twenty, thirty?
I don't think it's that long, it's, it's not, he hasn't requested any, like, permission with new orders being placed. Remember that, these things for the last three or four years, it's taken a long time to get the dump truck, longer than it takes to get a car, and, uh, and that's been the time, so, with the dump trucks and heavy equipment on the part of the, the, the task of the fleet management community, so these are outside of, um, it's, it has been ordered and is anticipated to be in the next month or two, and we gotta call, and it's, and we deliver it today.
I would make the, I, I'm gonna make the motion that I believe that all of these projects at the bottom and add a hundred and fifty thousand if the dump truck be approved.
Okay, do we have a second?
I would like to see that highway project increased.
And I'm fine with that, Gary.
I'd like to see it increased to seven hundred, well, seven hundred eighty six thousand dollars anyway, maybe even a million dollars on that, uh, 'cause we don't know exactly what the progress or cost is, estimated cost on that. I, I feel like it's so important that we get those projects done, I would say.
I will revise my motion to include the projects at the bottom, increase the highway project, uh, projects to a million, and include a hundred and fifty thousand for the dump truck.
Motion and a second, any other questions?
I have a comment.
Just so you know that that amount is more than we have left in, in ARPA, uh, I'm gonna rephrase that, not more than we have left, but more than we have uncommitted, is your...
All that stuff in the middle's not committed.
Correct, and so the uncommitted, if you look up at the top, you just committed everything here except two hundred thousand dollars, so that means...
So it's two million at the top.
Total is two million, which means that you're at two million, three hundred thousand, you're increasing this one from five hundred thousand to one point five million, is that what you said?
No, one million.
One million.
One million, okay, so two million, I, I apologize, you, there is enough money, uh, two million fifty three thousand, two hundred and thirty six dollars would be to happen down there that year.
Well, this is a recommendation from us back to the commissioners, and so you can let us know how you feel about these things, yeah, so do we, how much do we have for the ones in the middle? What do we have left for the...
I'm in on the motion and second.
Okay.
That, um, I can support Tony's motion, um, to fund those at the bottom, just plant dollars out of the general fund, um, with the pledge from council that we're going to pursue his initiative of the longevity. Uh, we have discussed the disparity in pay amongst employees, we have discussed the, uh, um, difficulties in the, um, wage and benefit, um, in dealing with the recommendations out of the, uh, the Irwin, um, and our limitations, uh, in job classifications, and, uh, I think this is an opportunity to be able to deal with some of that through a longevity program that, uh, would give us some cash to consider that.
And Barry and I have exchanged messages about that, and, um, I would like, since I'm chairman of the personnel committee, to start having some deep discussions on these options and needs, too, that what we would implement today, or whatever, activity is an example, I think.
You can't, you can't use it all, because that would be a hole in the budget in future years, but you could, you could get something started.
So, then my intention is that the personnel committee will start discussing these things and try to have some plans in place prior to, uh, budget cycle, to get that correct. Uh, I agree with Gary's comments on the highway equipment, there's two or three items on there that are really critical, the, the next after the, uh, fuel tanks, which we've already committed to, is a chloride tank that is over forty years old, that's, could have mysterious consequences environmentally if we don't get that replaced, there's a couple other items on there that's really critical in the near term, uh, they're all needed, and at some point, we're gonna have to address them, for instance, painting the building, it's been twenty-five more years since that was painted, that's gotta be done here soon, some other things out there on buildings and so forth, it's gotta happen, um, in the near future, so we need to seriously look at that. I would encourage the commissioners to discuss these items and then get back with us, and we can start talking about what, what is appropriate, what we, what we can do and what we can't.
And keep in mind that, um, even though we're spending these to save money in general fund, these are still our dollars, and we have committed with the commissioners that we will agree on how they're all spent, so if we save that, save that much money out of general, the commissioners have asked that we consult them also on the projects that we end up spending this money on ultimately. Does anybody have a problem with that? Okay.
Don't worry, it's great, and I'll second Tony's motion, as amended.
Can you tell your whole motion, if you're sure?
Uh, our recommendation would be to recommend the, the projects at the bottom of the page, changing the last line item, highway projects, including, uh, parking lot at the fairgrounds from five hundred thousand to a million, and to add the new dump truck of a hundred and fifty thousand, which just came in yesterday, or is coming in the next few days.
Do we have a second? You second that? All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? There are none.
Just one final comment, if I could on that.
I was gonna, oh, okay, it's time for your comments anyway, you got some more comments?
I just wanna, wanna remind you, the last section, my intention is simply to put that in front of you today, not that you would make a recommendation, commissioners, the other commissioners have not seen that list, we'll be discussing it, and we'll get back with you, uh, in the near future.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Good morning, it's referring to your sheet that you see every two weeks, a couple changes since the last time you looked at it, uh, the courthouse exterior, obviously the contractor, obviously when the weather starts to break, you start normalizing, you can't get out here to that, so you're looking at some time in March before that starts, uh, and then, you know, the, the remainder portion of that, you're probably looking at, uh, middle of the summer before you start seeing a, another pay app towards that. Number five, the chamber remodeling, the, uh, contractor did finish the bulkhead yesterday, it looks good, and, uh, so the contractor's portion of this is finished, the technology person is not, uh, probably have a conversation with the commissioners today, to see if we can change that relationship with that particular contractor. IT has, uh, as he may, the person in their department, he's written a lot of feedback on the software technologies that's been used here, so that we can transition over to that, so, something on that. The, uh, jail window replacement, the windows, all, a number of months ago, we identified a number of windows that need to be replaced in the jail, these are the, the bulletproof type windows, they're not just typical windows, that project's been finished, uh, ready to start on the next round, there are a couple of windows in the front of the jail that's behind that storefront window that you see from the street, I can't see them, but you, they're in the inside, so we're obtaining quotes on that, but the original specifications for the original contract, that has been finished. The, uh, health department awning, that has, material's been ordered for that, there's a six to eight week delivery time on that product, and then the, uh, painting, the prosecutor's front area of that project has been finished as well. First Bank Expo Hall HVAC, they've been working inside, uh, they finished the insulation and ductwork, still online, have those outside units delivered on the twentieth, haven't heard anything different than that. The ejector pump panel, EMA, uh, those parts have been ordered, it began about a five to six week lead time on that, uh, delivery. Annex ejector pump panel, uh, same, same timeframe, different product, about the same time, and the same thing on the annex sub-pump panel. Um, we are obtaining the quote, back to your point, Gary, on the horse bond roof, and will also start discussion, I mean, bringing the commissioners up to speed on, on what that, uh, original plan called for, our communication with the court of justice, and then the fairgrounds committee to make a recommendation back. And then those numbers in the lower right-hand corner, those have changed in the last five to ten minutes, so, uh, prior to your discussion, your, that first number, that one point three is a number that you had committed already out of your one-time account, so, um, I think I heard you moved the jail roofs to the, to the ARPA fund, so, so that'll reduce that committed amount.
That's not fine.
I understand. And then the, uh, the council one-time fund balance of two point five, that includes the covered amount, the amount that was remaining after your, the appropriation, and the anticipation of the finance committee approving the transfer from the fairgrounds, uh, naming rights amount back into that fund, if that makes sense? And then the last number on the lower right-hand corner is after you make that transfer, the payment for the furniture, that'll be what is remaining. of the payment for the furniture, that'll be what is remaining in the fairground. Any questions?
And at this time, for the additional.
No, the fairgrounds committee will consider some ideas. We do have some ideas, bring them back to commissioners for the recommendation, and the commissioners come back to you before we spend those time. Okay.
Any other questions? More comments from the commissioners? Sure.
Just wanted to, uh, share the, sort of new version of the spreadsheet that passed out earlier. Everyone's seeing this for the first time, they had, uh, pulled together late last week. So on one side, uh, you have the help projects that we're actually tracking, the expenditures. On the other side, you have the non-help projects, obviously it can be based on your actions today, and depending on what the commissioners do with some of those, uh, this will, this side will change, the non-help projects. But looking at the help projects, uh, seeing anything new here, uh, we are in implementation phase, so we'll, we'll start seeing, uh, significant amounts of, of these dollars expended in three to six months, and we'll track this for you. So at this point, most of the far right column, the remaining balance is the same as the project. We'll continue to track that on a monthly basis and have that available. So any questions? At the bottom of that page, we have the help projects that had other funding, uh, and this is, uh, the emergency communications, the initial phase, the strategic, uh, their strategic services did for us, uh, it was, uh, it was paid for out of, uh, actually it says general fund, but I think that was paid out of county edit, so maybe a correction you need to make. Same with what you mentioned, consolidated and county edit. This actually is a two-point project, uh, that's EDC and their board has accrued, and we have a group. So there's, it's split evenly, three hundred and ninety thousand between consolidated edit and three hundred and ninety thousand of county edit. There are different rules, uh, based on where the money was coming from. So the recommendation is that, um, the, the towns that are participating in consolidated edit, they're paying their money in consolidated edit, um, they're eligible for this, uh, this light elimination program out of that pot of money, uh, in the, uh, county edit, we pay for the help communities and the unincorporated areas of the county, which is where we're now concerned. On the other side, I haven't looked at this, uh, details since, uh, since the decisions that you all have put forward, but, uh, remember that the non-help projects include, and this is by year, so in 2022, we spent four hundred and twenty-five thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five dollars on the, for the sheriff. In 2023, we paid the community coordinator, uh, scanning project, sheriff's vehicles were paid out of ARPA. Baker Tilly is our ARPA consultant, and we are working with them, in fact, a lot of the issues surrounding what we could spend ARPA dollars on that we just, the discussion we just had, was based on a conversation that Beth and I and Ron had with Baker Tilly about allowable expenditures, uh, based on the lost revenue portion of ARPA. So that lost revenue, the ten million dollars that we claim is lost revenue, is what makes a lot of these expenditures possible.
And when he said Beth and I, you mean?
I'm sorry, Beth feels the, Beth feels the community coordinator, correct. So, uh, then in 2024, uh, the Motorola radio programming, which was a, a requirement based on having purchased the radios in 2022, so we just paid for the programming of those radios, uh, earlier this year, and it's not paid yet. No, there's no, it's okay, so that has been paid. Then the fuel tank, uh, has been approved at five hundred thousand, uh, and then the uncommitted ARPA funds, so we'll see that change if we, updates anywhere, we'll put in the, the committed projects as they, as they're committed to. Questions? We will, uh, I thought in my workshop, have some sense of where the commissioners are at with your recommendations from this morning. I think, uh, I think there probably are, are some that will have some questions on, so we may want to have some further conversations. But, uh, again, the, the idea that Beth expressed, that our position, uh, as we've discussed and I've actually adopted, uh, if there are funds that, um, replace general fund or other fund dollars with ARPA purchases, our position is that we should be involved in those conversations. It gets to the point of budget process. You all allocate the funding, uh, and usually we communicate, but we don't necessarily always agree, and the budget process is controlled by council. We want this to be collaborative, as the ARPA process is supposed to be, and so we want to make clear that, that we, we deeply committed to this being a collaborative process going forward, so if we, if we take two million dollars of ARPA and replace those expenditures that are currently mandated out of general fund, just to make a union, uh, we would like to be, have a seat at the table as we discuss, uh, how those dollars would be spent. So, uh, if you need to talk through that further, if you have questions, I just know what we're talking about.
Questions?
Which, like, one or two other points. I, I was at the Legislative Affairs Committee, uh, Association of Indiana Counties, I'm on the Legislative Affairs Committee, and that was yesterday. I then was able to schedule a couple of meetings at the State House, one of which was with the Chief Justice, uh, and Mrs. Rush, um, about, uh, funding for the courts, and in particular, uh, as they are going, I'm tired last week, I haven't had a chance to talk to him, I asked him, what is the one issue that deeply changed, uh, we, we had to improve in this, this system? And his response to me was the salaries, and, and, which probably then becomes a surprise to anybody. I did talk to, to the Senator Rush about, uh, they have reports that come to them from the judges on the number of employees, the categories, and how much they're paid. I, I thought it would be an interesting thing, a process to go through, to get those reports from the courts, and they're going to send them to me, or at least a link to, to the webpage, and compare those to, to the numbers that early misusing. My assumption is they're going to be identical, but if they're not, that's, that's an additional piece of information that might be helpful for those issues going forward. So when I get that, I'll, I'll make sure that you all have access to that information as part of your process, for Max in particular, personnel, to make sure he has that information. Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you. So, uh, does anybody else on council have any, uh, comments? Reports, okay, our next, our?
Committee report.
Okay.
Excuse me, just a highlight here, ADC, Monday, Monday evening approved the Wolverine worldwide lease termination, uh, there'll be a buyout on that, eighty-nine thousand five hundred dollars from the Wolverine. And Vandoor will be creating a new lease, I think, if everything goes right, that'll be completed, completed this week yet, so Vandoor will be leasing that building, it's pretty, pretty late. I was on the news, I thought, yeah, I better say something about it, so if I had any question, that was part of the, part of the program.
Okay. So council commissioner workshop is at six PM on February twenty-first and March sixth at eight AM is our next council meeting. All in favor of motion to adjourn?
Aye.
Second, motion and a second, all in favor? Aye.